Okay, Chair entertain a motion to adopt the working agenda today. Motion been made and been properly seconded any further. All in favor, right hand please. Pose the same sign, motion carries. Yes, sir.
We need to go on to second session, President. We got some personally on some delegation going on. Could we obtain the motion that too?
Uh, yes, we can. Let's get to that area then, we'll do, we'll do that if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Alright, what we're gonna do now, the agenda before we get to the mail report, we're gonna do our presentations. So, I'm gonna put you in charge of that council.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Yeah, you have some presentations you want me to do.
President, this is, this coming from the City Council now. We had some outstanding employees, most of them retired now. Some of them let, let go. But every time we have an employee that retire, anything happens, always bring it for the City Council. And we make a presentation for them now. We give them a nice plaque, we give them a steak, salad, and potato. But I don't know how much we appreciate them for the job they've done. At this time, I'm gonna call, uh, Fire Chief Marcus Banks comes first. It is, uh, McDowell back there, Fire Chief McDowell? Fire Chief McDowell, yeah, I recognize you, man. I want that McDowell, Chief Marcus Banks here. Thank you, man, for that. And then, see what I'm doing.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. It says, "For 31 years of service presented to Chief Marcus Banks and grateful appreciation of your dedication, hard work, and law service as Fire Chief in the City of Greenwood, August 5th, 2025, presented by the City Council." I'll tell you a truth here. January 3rd, 1995, right? That's, uh, I started in April 10th of 1995. We have fought a lot of fire together. And the fire service is the thing about fire people, we call them Fire Guy. He was a fire guy. Because he fought every fire when he was off duty. Uh, he knew about turnout gear, turnout gear is what we wear when we go into the structure. Right now, the City of Greenwood has some of the best fire gear in the country, not Greenwood, in the city. This was up, uh, Chief Banks. Right now, we have a fleet of fire troopers that go along with anybody in the country. I can say that because I helped him. But he has that. So, a lot of what you see is innovative, forward-thinking, is because of Fire Chief Marcus Banks. Well deserved, congratulations.
McDowell, it's also that little fire trooper getting to myself.
Okay. Ah, this is great. Well, dedicated service, honored church.
I'm sure you give him his safety. And he get the, unpack the river ice, stick it up, and salad, and make it go along with it.
And this was in Greenwood, okay.
What time, what time you want to? What time you want to?
Thank you, President. You might want to tell you, thank you, man, the job well done. Thank you for your service, 31 years of long service. At this time, I'll call Chief Terry Trapp. And is, uh, Chief King got there with?
Yeah.
You got one of them guys to do the party here. They work with him. Chief King, who did that to him?
Chief Craig. Yes, sir. Chief Dan Trapp, in grateful appreciation of your dedication, your hard work, and law service as Police Chief in the City of Greenwood, always did 2025, presented by the City Council. I want to say, Chief Trapp, after 20 plus years, you've been a friend, you've been in our pride and awesome. You've been able to shape the City of Greenwood as we have today. Your dedication and this, uh, all work that he has for the city. We highly appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Always believe something once. Isn't also a city.
Thank you.
Best friend of mine, the amazing people in the department that work with him doing daily life. Thank you so much, I come from him now. At this time, I'll call Sue Beileford. I don't see any appointment here that can work back here now. So, I'm gonna give it to, uh, Lisa Cusack, who's in.
Susan, you did a wonderful job while you were here. You were always available and very, always responsive. And thank you so much, all of you guys, I appreciate it very much. Thank you, just for all the years you've given, we appreciate it. You're welcome. Thank you very much. Life is good.
Some steak you would take. Nice, Michael, you's back here. Mike, is he back here?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm here, Mike, so I want you to lift this to the studio. That's the wrong one. He's 13.
Uh, this is for, uh, ready, something for. Retiring, on, 2025, presented by the City Council. He taught me everything that I've known, uh, as far as working here in the city. And I thank you for that. Here's your plaque. Magic Bluebird, a half, next three years, George. Oh, they definitely got.
Thank you, Lord, you, thank you.
Thank y'all for your service, though. That's a lot of you, though, so I think 33 years, Chief, thank 31, Chief Trapp 21, and, uh, Sue Beileford, 13 years. Thank you for your service. Job well done. I'm always sending people flowers, wanting them to smell. So, thank y'all for serving Greenwood so well. Thank you. President, in the presence of the President.
Okay, then, thank you for the presentation, Mr. McCall. We appreciate it. And again, congratulations to all, uh, employees and former employees. Alright, next we go to number two, the mail's report. Mail, anytime you gotta tell us today.
Good afternoon. I do have a, a report. However, I do want to address some issues that, uh, came across, uh, my desk. I received a phone call Thursday. Our rate councilman, uh, was complaining about the oversea of the car center. I tried to explain what was going on. They pretty much didn't want to hear it. Every time I said one word, it was cut off. I received a text message today, oh, no, yesterday, correction, yesterday, uh, in regards of it. So, I want to break down the concerns I have. The former overseer of the car center, actually, there was two complaints it was complaining about. There was complaint about, um, an employee and a vendor. Both of them were using a city facility without the proper paperwork. The one was, the initial complaint was about the car center. The car center overseer said that she was an employee of the city. I went, I reached out to the human resource department. They stated that she was not a, uh, an employee, she was a vendor. The other one was classed was a, a employee, both of them using, um, the city official, the city officials' facilities without the proper paperwork. In regards to the car center, um, according to the Greenwood City Ordinance, Chapter 26 dash 1C, um, no one has the exclusive use of a facility without the proper permit. No contract or permit was filed on the exclusive use of the car center. And the text message from the attorney, he stated that the City Council is the governing authority in regards to the hiring of the overseer. According to the Attorney General, um, that was given by the attorney, it says, um, "The governing authority consists of the mayor and the City Council" in the mayor coun, uh, council form. He also stated that the hiring of the City Council, he also said that the, the City Council, hired her, hired her to be a, to, hired her to do the day-to-day operation. It wasn't a, um, employee and employer type of, um, setting. It was more so that she will be overseeing it through a contractual basis. If that's the case, that means that we're not only breaking the city ordinance, we also breaking the state ordinance, uh, which state says that according to state law, any, uh, any, uh, payments of service of a vendor over the amount of $1,000 requires a bidding process. No documentation were found of the bidding process of her using the, uh, the facility. So, that means not only, um, she didn't, she didn't have a permit, not only did she have a contract, but she also, if we're gonna use a contract to oversee something, that means that a bidding process should have been done prior to the happening. It didn't happen. Alright, um, so that means that we are held liable for anything that happened. That overseer received close to $52,860 in payments. Alright, those payments could have assisted with, um, things of fixing different utilities vehicles that we have, have problems, especially in public works. So, those are among concerns. With these violation of the bidding process, that means that the contract was, um, abhorable. Although, uh, we did not have a contract or permit on file, which means that no, there was no, um, there was no, there was nothing broken from the standpoint of our Attorney General opinion. There was a resolution put in place. A resolution is intent to go on contract. No contract was ever put in place. No permit was put in place, no contract in place. So, the situation, that means that, that, that person was using the facility without the proper consent. So, that means anything would have transpired at that facility, the city would have been held, uh, allowed before. So, if we want to say we're gonna do things right, we gotta do it right on both sides. You can't throw the fence, you mean, you can't throw, you can't, you can't throw, throw the chair at one person who did wrong, but want to turn, uh, turn your back on the other. So, what we're gonna do, we're gonna do it, uh, right across the board. And that's where I'm at, uh, in regards to the car center. To the mayor's report, uh, the Sunday Brown Pool will, will remain closed due to unsanctioned pool parties, uh, that have, um, that was being held without the proper consent. The employee has been, the employee has been suspended without pay until an investigation is completed. We have soon realized that the gentleman, uh, during the investigation, he was given a letter, um, about what transpired. He had, he attended a discipline in here on June 6th. He put in his resignation. The gentleman, uh, agreed that he did break over 16 different rules. However, he did decide to resign. Police Department, we have done interviews for the, the vacant position. We have, we hired, we, we interviewed close to eight or nine applicants. Demetri Beedel was deemed the, um, qualified candidate in, in front of a panel. Public Works, several Public Works employees have suffered, uh, through heat exhaustion. Uh, one of, one of the employees had coded blue due to heat, due to the heat. Truck 208, truck 328 has been taken off due to, uh, no air. It was stated that the truck was over 120, uh, 120 degrees. We also had two other trucks that go down due to overheating and being a concern for the, the well doing of, uh, the well-being of the people who are working. There are concerns of conditions of the public works. There's been extreme condition with his, uh, uh, heat in summer and, uh, cold, rain coldness in the winter. City Clerk, uh, we did do a interview process. Uh, the, the current city worker has done, City Clerk has done a great job. She decided not to apply for the position. How else she is, uh, will be taking, uh, taking position. She will take the role of a different position within, um, the city clerk office. So, we're looking forward to her doing great things. The resume of the young lady who did, uh, was deemed the most qualified, uh, has been given to you. As well as, each department has, has provided you a 90-day plan, uh, to strengthen the department and the relationship on the community. Each one of you should have that. Also, the new opioid settlement. I received an email as well as Attorney Brock. It shows that, um, we must vote on a, well, you, the council must vote on a Purdue plan submitted by September 16th. As well as make sure that we do the E, E sign. Sign cost infrastructure and sewer improvement. They sent a correct contract, uh, contract change. It stated that they needed 36 inches. They came back and said, uh, they found that they only need 24, which dropped the price from, uh, to $20,946. It will be decreased, I'm sorry, decreased by $20,946.85. The Greenwood Flore Hospital Board, at the previous board meeting, the, uh, the LaFlore County Board of Supervisors submitted two candidates to consider for the vacant, uh, seat of the Board of Directors of the Greenwood Flore Hospital. The information, the resolution was provided for you all to oversee. Mississippi Policy Conference, Tonka, Mississippi, August 17th through 10th. I will be attending to identify different policies and things that will be, uh, sufficient for the City of Mississippi, uh, City of Greenwood, I'm sorry. And this is my report.
Alright, yes.
Can we get any sales tax information? To where, to know where we are? That's, that's something we're used to getting.
Well, actually, you all supposed to get a monthly budget, uh, report every month. You haven't received a month, monthly budget report consistently since 2022. So, I'm, I'm giving you permission. So, if you had the monthly budget report, you would have the information within that.
I'm asking for the sales tax. I, I didn't ask about that. And when are we gonna start on the budget?
We're working on it now.
Who is?
I've worked on it, Dr. Bush as well, we've had conversations, I have meetings with.
Who's Dr. Bush?
Dr. Bush is my sister.
Oh, she's a doctor, okay.
Alright, let's have quiet in the audience.
Well, I hope, we usually, we usually workshop the budget by this one, so.
Well, we're working on it.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, President. I think when we were saying, we, we do get the sale tax thing every month, uh, we've been getting that, uh, since I've been on the City Council.
Yes, sir. I'll make sure that you get it from, from.
On this walkout project, uh, what's timeline on phase one? I know they started on phase one. Do you have the timeline on that when you go, go to phase two?
I have not received the information. I have, I've been having conversation with Mr. Robbs about it. He did send me the information. Uh, we'll reach out to him about the beginning of the day.
Is, was there a nail that project, uh, who of that project there? The walkout project? I thought it was Neil that project.
Sign, uh.
Have they signed things?
Sign costs is.
About pipes are recognized.
So, sign costs are the pipes. I think Wednesday engineering was working with this.
Who you remember, who you remember on that, on that, uh, walkout project?
Mr. Robbs.
So, phase two will be starting sooner than, than phase one.
I, I get all the information, as soon as I get all the information, I'll make sure I, I present to you all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for that report. Alright, we're gonna do the public agenda. First on the public agenda, Ms. Marguerite Meeks. After the public agenda.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Margaret Rhett Meeks. I am a citizen of Greenwood. I reside in Ward 2. And I am also, um, an attorney. I'm here as a private citizen to, um, to present, uh, some concerns that I have as a private citizen. The first, um, matter is, in my comments, uh, or on the, uh, agenda, they are couched as public access and involvement in municipal government. The first item, um, is, there is, um, from the first meeting, even today, it is very difficult for members of the public who are in the council gallery to hear what, um, the council is discussing. And with all due respect, everything that you do in here concerns the public's business. You work for the public, and while the public does not have a right to interfere with your discussions, the public certainly, certainly has a right to hear what you are saying as it relates to your performing, uh, your addressing the public's business. And so, I would ask that, um, the council, um, consider, um, installing microphones in front of each chair at the desk like other, um, municipal governments do for their governing authorities, so that people can hear, and so that members of the public will not be embarrassed by being told, uh, to not speak, that the council is just talking to itself and not to members of the public. The second item relates to the city's website. I went there to retrieve the most recent agenda and the most recent minutes. And when I clicked on, and I've done this multiple times on different days, just to see if something's been updated. But when I click on the most recent agenda, it pulls up February 2nd, 2021. That was more than four years ago. And that suggests that, um, none of that information from the previous term was provided. When I clicked on the most recent minutes, and the minutes is what the governing authority speaks, the boards and commissions speak to their minutes. And so, the public has a right to see what official action the board has passed, the council has passed with respect to the public's business. And so, when I pull up the most recent minutes, it pulls up minutes from January 19th, 2021. That's more than four years ago. Soon will be five years. And I, I don't, as a private citizen, I don't believe that that is acceptable. If the city did not have a website, then I would say there would not be an expectation to retrieve that, um, information. Also, the website does not provide information on how members of the public can request, uh, to get on the agenda for public comments. There just doesn't seem to be, um, let me put it this way. There appears to be a lack of transparency, um, to allow citizen, um, involvement. The, um, website also does not provide information on, um, requesting a public records request. That information is not there. It doesn't tell the public how to, uh, make that request. And so, uh, while the city ordinance says that there is a form, I could not find the form. So, there's no info provided to the public on how to, uh, request this. I want to go back to the agenda and the minutes. That is under the section, uh, you click on council, City Council, and you check on, uh, meetings. That's where the agenda and the minute sections are. But that information is more than four years old. And, um, the public, as a member of the public, I'm just gonna speak for myself and not people who in, in the gallery. I have a right as a citizen of Greenwood, a taxpayer, to know how the council is conducting business that concerns me as a citizen. I should be able to go to the website, retrieve the agendas, retrieve minutes, and none of that information is there. So, the only way I'm gonna get it is that I have to go to the clerk's office to, uh, request that. And so, I just think that as, um, this new council begins its new term, I, um, ask that the council consider, um, fixing some of those things so that the public can have access to, um, city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks. Next on the public agenda, we have Marcus Banks.
Good afternoon again. Councilor Wallace says sometimes you gotta show me you can do it. My purpose for being on the agenda today is actually twofold. First, I want to say thank you to this council, if you give my good sign. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to this entire council, um, for your support of the Greenwood Fire Department, blowing my 10 years chief. I stand before you as the longest-serving chief in the history of Greenwood Fire Department, 15 years. Some of the things that Chief McDowell spoke about, you all, some of you all, had a lot to do with that. He spoke about the turnout gear. He spoke about the, uh, fire, and I said, we do have one of the best fleets in the state of Mississippi. Because I was able to come to you all and ask for these big-ticket items without any hassle. And I've often stood before you all over the years, first time standing as a civilian. And what I often tell you all, um, with the colleagues I have, other chiefs, other aldermen, old state of Mississippi, I hear a lot of horrible stories about how they did not get along with their council or their board of aldermen. I did not have that experience. Things that need to be done, if you go back, I know the President was here, Councilor Cora, I think, maybe, I know Mr. Jennings was here. When I first came in in 2010 as a chief, we had just completed a, uh, fire rating evaluation, I think, two years prior to it, like 2018. And if you all recall, we were a class four, we lived class four fire department for a number of years. But at that time, we were in jeopardy. We was what the rating bureau called a weak four, which meant we were in jeopardy of going to a class five, which would have had horrible consequences on insurance ratings for homeowners and commercial buildings here in Greenwood. But it wasn't the city's fault. We were kind of blamed for progress because what created, um, the weak four was when the city annexed our west. And when hotels went up, out near Walmart, they created an additional ladder district, inside language, which meant we need another ladder truck. At the time, we had one ladder truck downtown, we covered downtown area, but once our rides went up out there, we needed an additional ladder truck. We had, uh, low water pressure down by 10, in the city limits. And we had some issues with our communication in the fire department. I came before the council for, at that time, was one of the biggest purchases, uh, another ladder truck. And you all graciously agreed that we need to be, need to purchase this piece of equipment, and we need to improve our fire rating. As we stand before you now, our fire rating is still a class four, but we're less than a point away from being a class three. The lower the better. We're a point, six, eight points away from being a class three fire department. And again, this council informed Mayor McAdams had a lot to do with it. The only issue, it wasn't the issue. Sometimes, when I came to ask for these big tickets, my president would always say, uh, "Chief, you can't find a grant for that?" Because he would always see Ruben from Greenwood, my friend from Greenwood Fire Department, Chief Ruben Brown, getting a lot of equipment with grants. And I had to pull the president to the side, "Man, I'm gonna get some grants." So, we were able to do these things, uh, over here. And I want to say thank you for your support again over 15 years. My second reason, my primary reason, actually, for being here is my support, um, for the incoming fire chief. I've known Chief McDowell since 1995. I've known his family, his, his great uncle, Elder Aaron Johnson, who was a fellow pastor, he's First Street Christian Church baptized me when I was a kid. I went to church with his grandmother and grandfather, so for a number of years, at his First Street Christian Church. We came up through the ranks together. We came up through the ranks together. I, I decided years ago that I want to be the fire chief, and I set my sights on that and I would do it. But along the way, we were always side by side. If I moved up, I brought him with me. And it's sort of like the military sergeant, man, we don't leave a man behind.
That's right.
So it, it was, it's my wishes. I think he's more than capable of assuming the role of fire chief. Uh, hopefully, he picks up on some things from me, uh, over the years. I can sit myself on the above average, intelligent man, educated man, but I was smart enough that my dad taught me, surround myself with some smart people. He has the respect and the support of men. The fire department right now needs some stability. There's a lot of angst in the fire department about who's gonna be the next chief. And the guys are hearing rumors about some of these outside guys coming in. And from the names I'm hearing, it would be a horrible mistake. So I stand before this council with my full-throated endorsement. I don't have a, I don't, I'm not a councilman. I don't play one on TV, but if I had a vote, my vote would be for Chief Mar- Martrullus Allen McDowell to take fire chief of Greenwood Fire Department. That's my time. One more thing that I'd like to leave to Chief McDowell. You know, you hear all these cliches, and I've been there, that it's, it's lonely at the top, it's heavy as the head that wears the crown, and all of that is true. A lot of y'all been in leadership positions. And I've been there, but I always have been able to revert back. When I'm sitting upstairs and you make decisions, it's not popular with the guys, and everybody beating you up. There's a very familiar, very familiar passage of scripture that I always will read to myself when I got in those situations, like, and I'd like Chief McDowell to hear this. It's, uh, Matthew twenty-five and twenty-one. His Lord said unto him, "Well done. Thou didst in faithful service. Thou hast been faithful over a few things. Thou shalt make you rule over many things. Enter thou unto the joy of the Lord." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, you put that. Mr. McQuarrie, I'm gonna let you make a motion now. How you gonna do this?
Yeah, I'd like to go on executive session, brother. We got some personnel problem and also some litigation going on in the city of Greenwood. I'd like to go and discuss it, uh, with the mayor, if it's with the council, or I'll allow me to. The motion needs to go into a closed determination.
Okay. Mr. McGee.
I don't have to question. Why we need to go on executive session?
He just said, told you why.
We got some, some personnel issue though, in the city though, and also we got lit- litigation that may be coming on the city. I want to go and discuss it with Mayor Cox.
He just came out today.
I mean, we, we, we meet today, so we want to discuss the litigation. We can't do it in an open forum.
I understand.
Have to do it in.
I don't know. How long you been knowing this?
Pardon me now?
How long you been knowing this?
Knowing what?
The litigation and thing.
I, I never seen nothing, maybe it's last week. We meet the council, don't have anything. We have to do it.
And we can discuss it further and, and.
Right.
We can ask him questions about it.
The council's wishes and then vote to whether or not to go into executive. Thank you, brother.
Okay. Make your motion for closed session, Mr. McQuarrie.
I said move to a closed session, brother, for executive session.
A second.
Motion been made in second to go into closed session first. Any further? All in favor, right hand? Poses. All right. Motion carries. Six to one. All righty. What's our next step?
We're, we're going into closed session.
Closed session.
All right, we're into the.
Yeah, all right. It's been motion by the council to go in closed session, so we're gonna have to ask the chamber to please excuse themselves. Thank you.